Hey, we are live.
Okay, Mrs. DiCarlo, let's call the meeting to order at 6:05. You have an intentional call, please.
This is Brooks.
Here.
Mrs. Corralaru.
Here.
Mrs. Mezic.
Here.
Mrs. Shields.
Here.
Mrs. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Thomasini.
Here.
Mrs. Hellbore. We have a quorum.
Thank you. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act is passed to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting your interests is discussed and acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of the Act, Rockaway Township Board of Education has caused notice of the date, time, and place of said meetings to be published in the Daily Record, the Star Ledger, be posted in all schools in the district, and the Rockaway Township School District website, www.rockwaytwin.net. Does any board member wish to object to the conduct of this meeting for the purposes stated in public notice? All documentation materials considered by the Board of Education as part of this agenda are available for public review and comment. Members of the public are invited to come to the Board of Education meeting off Grand Pond Road during the regular business hours of 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, if they wish to inspect any of the reference items. I have a motion to waive the pleasure until open session.
So moved.
Second.
So, Mrs. Brooks, seconded by Mr. Thomasini. I have a motion to go into closed session.
So moved. Second.
Brooks. Who's the second? Mr. Thomasini. We have a show of hands, enter the closed session. Okay, so we're going into closed session at 6:07. Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn the closed session?
So moved.
Second.
That was Mrs. Shields, and seconded by Mr. Thomasini. Now, show of hands. Okay, show that the closed session ended at 7:36, and that we are reconvening at the same time. Okay, can we stand for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States.
The United States of America, and to the republic.
For which it stands.
One nation. One nation, under God.
Indivisible.
With liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before I read the public discussion, I just want to make a note, as per our policy 0161, call adjournment and cancellation. All meetings shall be called to commence not later than 8:00 p.m. on the day designated. So we needed a few extra minutes in executive session, so I'm just giving a notification why it appears that we started a bit late, the public. Okay, during the course of the board meeting, the Rockaway Township Board of Education offers members of the public an opportunity to address issues regarding the operation of the Rockaway Township public schools. The board reminds those individuals who take this opportunity to identify themselves by name and address, and to limit their comments to items listed on the agenda, and/or items directly related to the operation of the school district. Issues raised by members of the public may or may not be responded to by the board. All comments will be considered, and a response will be forthcoming if and when appropriate. Comments regarding students and employees of the board are discouraged and will not be responded to by the board. The board bears no responsibility, nor will be liable for any comments made by the members of the public. Do we have anyone waiting to speak?
We do have two members at this time. The first up is our own Brian Adams. Okay, I'm admitting him to the meeting now.
Okay. Hello, please identify yourself by name and address.
Sure, Brian Adams, RTEA.
Okay, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, I'm Brian Adams, co-president of the RTEA, and I'm here on behalf of RTEA co-president Tara Van Orden. There are two items that I'd like to highlight this evening. Tomorrow is our first, well, actually, our second RTEA Pride Event, our first ever contactless pizza kit pickup, where families will be able to make a great dinner together. Thanks to all those who've already signed up, as we are already sold out at 150 kits. This is our second Pride Event for the year where we serve our community. Although it looks very different this year, our annual pumpkin fest served over 90 families in the community this year. Everyone had access to gigantic pumpkins and carving kits, which I am sure led to a fun family night. And finally, tonight, well, actually, today, it's part of the American Education Week, where we celebrate on Wednesdays our education support professionals. And without our ESPs, our schools would not be able to function, because they are always there to assist our students. Our ESPs include our aides for our students, our custodial and maintenance staff help clean our buildings, our secretaries keep us informed, and our health service department are invaluable, especially nowadays. And our brother and sister organization, our bus drivers, get our students from point A to point B safely. Although we celebrate them today, I hope that we are thankful for them every day. And as COVID numbers climb in our state and community, everyone, please stay safe. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Lisa, may I make a comment? So just, I would like to echo Brian's sentiments in supporting and appreciating our support professionals, and I really appreciate him taking the time tonight to join us to say that publicly, and I join him in partnership with that. And I'd be remiss also not to both acknowledge Brian and Tara for their partnership these past six, seven, eight months, I guess it's been now. I very much look forward to our weekly meetings. I find them very productive, very professional, and again, just very much appreciate the partnership that we've struck up, working together to make sure that safety remains our top priority for our students and staff. So, Brian, thank you for joining us this evening for those comments.
Thank you, and it feels likewise.
Okay, do we have anyone else?
Do have one more member of the public ready to join.
Okay. Hello, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, let me just turn this down one second, so I don't get the feedback. This is April Kerlock, 33 Mount Hope Road, Rockaway 07866.
Welcome.
Thanks. I should realize I look a mess now. It's okay, don't cry. Hey, I showered. What more does anybody want? Hi, how are you guys doing?
All right.
Am I on?
Mm-hmm, yes, you are.
Okay. I know there was a delay, so I was kind of confused. So my comments tonight strictly pertain to the notifications for contact tracing, and ensuring that, you know, parents get all the information that they can get that's not, that's actually de-identified, which, you know, if you're not familiar with that term, it's a term we use, you know, in human research, especially when you're processing data sets and things. So basically, meaning, you know, we don't need anything that can be traced back to anybody, but we're out there as parents also trying to make life decisions. And I will say the last email sent by Dr. Tremanian that told us when contact tracing would be up, that was very helpful, and I'd like to see that continue, you know, to be able to be given that information. You know, in the past few, you know, few weeks and months, we've been doing this. My daughter's in Stony Brook, and my mother and my father both come up here, and my in-laws take rotating shifts on Thursdays and Fridays, because although I'm at work very little, I do have to work sometimes like two, three hours a day. There are things that you can't do, you know, from home in my job. So, you know, before I bring my parents up here, you know, I've been having, you know, some, just in general, kind of spaz attacks, for lack of a better word. I want to know contact tracing is complete, because my father and my mother and my in-laws both drive two to two and a half hours, one from Philly and one from Albany, New York. And I would appreciate that, you know, we continue to give as much information, especially when contact tracing is complete for your school. That's most important to me, because my mother has diabetes, and, you know, and I don't want to bring her here if I think, you know, that we might have been exposed, you know, and they have to drive. So there's other people, I think, in the same situation as me, maybe not as extreme, you know, people coming from out of town. But I just would appreciate that, you know, anytime I'm emailing anybody, I'm really not trying to throw anybody to the bus. I'm just generally looking for the bare facts, the information that allow me to move on with my life and my childcare, because I don't want my child to go to before and aftercare. I mean, I think it's great that this is happening for everybody, but in my life, I need to know. And, you know, and then, of course, as everybody knows, Facebook starts blowing up with, you know, who heard from who and who heard from what? And I just, I mean, I don't even need to do that. I just want to know, you know, were they contact traced, you know, maybe what day potentially the student was at school? I like that the emails now are saying, you know, the student was not at school. That makes me feel better. So I just wanted to continue and just make sure that it's timely for me to be able to make these decisions. So that's what I have tonight, you know, and I did want to thank, you know, for the last email, even though my daughter's not at KDM, I just, I just need information, and anything that I can get that isn't going to tell me who had the COVID. So that's all I have. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Is anyone else in the waiting room?
No, that's everyone who wished to make a public comment tonight.
Okay, so I'll be checking back in with you at the other periods of time, just to make sure. All right. Um. So I realize I forgot to actually open to public comment, so I guess we can close now. Can I have a motion to close public comment?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
And Mr. Thomasini, show of hands, please. Okay, thanks. Okay, under communications. Mrs. DiCarlo, do we have any further communications?
Uh, yes, we had the one request for approval for the Dwyer Playground dedication.
Okay, so it didn't make it on tonight's agenda, so it'll be on the next one, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And may I also, before we continue, I have to take a minute to read the unofficial report of elections.
Oh, sure.
For the candidates and the board elections that we just had. So on November 3rd, we had two seats that were open for elections, and Mrs. Nancy Hellbore had 3,455 votes, and Mrs. Lisa Mezic had 3,370 votes. So they both retained their seats on the board, and there were 120 write-in votes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, number two on the agenda, can we have a motion to approve the minutes from October 28th?
So moved.
Second. Mrs. Brooks and Mrs. Corralaru.
Christine.
I have a roll call, please.
Mrs. Brooks.
Yeah.
Mrs. Corralaru.
Yes.
Mrs. Mezic.
Yes.
Mrs. Shields.
Yes.
Mrs. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Thomasini.
Yes.
So moved.
Number three, the superintendent's report. Dr. Tremanian.
Thank you. Okay, good evening, Rockaway Township. I hope everyone is doing well. I would like to begin tonight by thanking the community for your partnership with our first ever virtual family conferences. While I know there were a few hiccups, by and large, the feedback has been positive, and I applaud all our teachers and leaders for their efforts. I would also like to acknowledge and thank Mr. Higgins and Mrs. Waxman for all the support they provide our teachers in planning and preparing for our first ever virtual family conferences. Also of note, this year, Copeland Principal Gennella led a switch to a student-led conference format for our middle school community, and we also received a lot of positive feedback about how this switch really made for a much more meaningful and informative conference experience for our middle school families. Thank you to Principal Gennella, his leadership team, and all of our middle school teachers for helping to transform the family conference experience during a time when our partnerships with our families have never been more important. On tonight's agenda, Regulation 5530 Substance Abuse is up for first read. Over the past several months, Principal Gennella and I have met with Les Wexler, the founder of the Rockaway Township Substance Abuse Alliance. Together, we've crafted new language in this regulation that memorializes our partnership to demonstrate our commitment to maintaining this critical partnership for many generations to come. On behalf of our entire school community, let me offer my sincere appreciation and gratitude to Les and the entire Rockaway Township Substance Abuse Alliance for all of the top-notch, first-rate programs they offer our students and families. Never have these resources and supports been needed more than now, as we live through these challenging times together. Tonight's agenda also includes two references to HIV self-assessment grades. The first is a resolution approving the submission of our self-assessment grades for the 1920 school year. And the second is a note about how our 1819 school year self-assessment grades were certified, they are now publicly available on our website. The range of the grades from the 1819 school year to the 1920 school year show a modest upward trend, where the 1819 school year grades ranged from 72 to 75, out of a possible score of 78 points per school. The scores submitted to the NJ DOE for Review and Certification for the 1920 school year ranged from grades of 74 to 76 across all six of our schools. Traditionally, we've used our December board meeting to honor our staff who recently earned tenure status with tenure pins and honoring staff for achieving milestones for years of service. While we will not host an in-person ceremony during our December meeting, we will read aloud the names of all those recognized, and we will be sure to host an in-person gathering when the conditions of the pandemic have improved. Please know, we very much value these achievements and accomplishments. In closing, I know the conditions of the pandemic remain top of mind for everyone. I want to acknowledge there are many different perspectives about how we should be responding to the recent pandemic increase in recent pandemic conditions. I also recognize there are strong feelings on both sides of the decision about whether to keep our schools open or to move to a full virtual model. As I've stated since the early days of the pandemic, the safety of our students and staff will be our top priority in all we do, and I'm proud to say it has been. By all accounts, we as a community succeeded in safely reopening our schools in September. This achievement is significant and due in every part to the work of an outstanding and talented leadership team, committed to working in true partnership with our highly dedicated and talented staff and our committed community. We demonstrated we are truly better together. Furthermore, I want to applaud our leaders and teachers for being able to quickly switch to full virtual instruction as needed these past couple of weeks. As a community, we ran our hybrid model uninterrupted for over two months, and by being able to shift quickly from hybrid to virtual, back to hybrid again, we ensure the safety of our students and staff while demonstrating the hard work and skill of our staff and their preparedness and readiness for handling the changing conditions of this pandemic. We should all be proud of how much we've accomplished. Going forward, I don't know if or for how long we may or may not be able to continue to operate our hybrid model. I am pleased to report and encouraged that our safety protocols have proven to be effective with transmissions occurring outside of our schools. However, if quarantine rates continue to escalate, it may create staffing challenges that we simply can't overcome. I will commit to communicate all developments as quickly and with as much transparency as possible to the entire community as I've had these past few months, and will continue to do in the weeks and months ahead. As we approach the Thanksgiving holiday, please know I remain deeply grateful and thankful for the community sports, the community support of our schools, and the work of our leaders and teachers during these challenging times. Thank you, be safe, and I wish you all a happy Thanksgiving holiday. And with that, I conclude my report.
Thank you, Dr. Tremanian. Can we have the business administrator's report?
Well, can I just make a comment?
Oh, sure, sorry.
Oh, yeah, I just wanted to say regarding Copeland and the conferences have, including the students in it, I really thought that was wonderful, because especially at that age, I think it's important that they're included in the conversation regarding their education. So I really enjoyed that they were a part of the whole group conversation. Feeds them back to we are better together, you know, every piece working together for a common goal. So I thought that was very successful.
Thank you, and I can reassure the community, it's something that we intend to continue to grow. It wasn't something that was something we just did because of the pandemic conditions. Both that and the virtual family experience, we think, will be in some way part of our conferences going forward.
Did anyone else have any other comments? No? Okay. Have the business administrator's report?
Yes, good evening. I have a couple of updates from the business office. Our audit started on November 17th. They expect to be in our district for approximately two weeks. We have received a permanent extension for the water treatment work at KDM from the DEP. The work will be done next summer in July and August. Stony Brook parking lot and site improvements have been completed. The additional site work at DBO will begin next week, as well as the punch list items. I will be meeting with Tom Wighart from LAN on November 23rd to discuss the design work for the installation of new UN events at DBO. This work will be done in the summer of 2021. I'm sure most everyone has heard that lunches for all students are now free. They still need to be ordered through Nutria Slice for the elementary schools. This is a program approved through the federal government. We hope to see many of our students take advantage of this opportunity for lunch at school every day and the convenience it will bring for the parents. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
Mrs. DiCarlo, I just want to confirm that this will put DBO into the, us able to monitor them from a remote location, correct? Just like all the other schools?
Uh, what are you referencing?
Like the humidity and the HVAC?
Oh, yes, they're going to be, they're going to be hooking that up to the AME software that's used with all the other schools, yes.
And then all six of our schools will be in the AME.
Yep.
Perfect, thanks.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
I know there's been some excitement about the idea of the free lunches, so just wanted to highlight that.
Okay. Um. Item number five, the curriculum report.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the board and hello, Rockaway Township. I too, like Dr. Trinamian, wanted to talk a little bit about the virtual parent conferences that we just went through. So I want to say thank you to everyone who participated in the virtual conferences over the course of last week. Our teachers once again adapted and learned on the fly how to schedule and coordinate parent conferences in a new unforeseen way. It is a true credit to the staff's ability to modify traditional practices and push forward with new models, however unfamiliar they are with the format. Also, much the same can be said about all of our parents and guardians who followed our instructions to a T and were able to participate in the Google Meet version of our conferences. We sent home detailed explanations and directions and I would say nine out of 10 or even more than nine out of 10 followed. So that was wonderful to see. We know this is new for you as well and we commend you on your patience with our new processes. Any and all issues that popped up, we're able, we were able to work through with you and find a solution. And also, I would like to commend the middle school as well for their move to student-led conferences. We're really proud of the, the way that that worked out and the way that we plan to see that going forward. This past week, I participated in the first round of Ready Math data updates after our first round of diagnostic testing. The data specialists from Ready Math walked me through some of the underlying metrics of how our students did on the Ready Math diagnostic across grades K through eight. As this was our first attempt at this new diagnostic on such a large scale, it was enlightening to see how our students fared across the grade levels as compared to national norms. As we move toward our second diagnostic in January, I'll be able to report out to the community on how we are progressing through the standards. And we didn't want to report out on everything right now because the, the diagnostic was so new and the rollout and entering school in this format was also new to us. So we wanted at least two data points before we begin to report out to the community. Also, as a reminder, please pay attention to the updated printable district calendar available on our website as it contains vital information about report card and trimester end dates. Copeland Middle School is operating on the traditional marking period schedule while all of our elementary schools are now operating on trimester schedules. Report cards for Copeland will be available on the 23rd in the portal. And the date for the end of the trimester for elementary schools is December 9th and report cards will be available on the 16th of December. Additionally, as I mentioned last month, our data dashboards for K5 will be launched in the, in the next few days and will be available in the parent portal. We will notify the community when they are available. Thank you and have a wonderful Thanksgiving.
Thanks. Any questions? Okay, then let's move along to item six, the committee reports. So are there any committee reports? Mrs. Smith?
Okay, the policy committee met on November 11th from 6:15 to 8:10 PM at Central Office. The attendants were Dr. T, Christie Correlia Row, Aaron Thomasini. Aaron was there from 6:15 to just before 7:10. And after Aaron left, he tagged in Nancy who joined from around 7:13 to 8:10. And I attended as well. The policies, regulations that were reviewed, first one was Regulation 5530 Substance Abuse, which is mandated. This is identified as mandated and the regulation is now required to be adopted by the board as per that most recent policy alert. There were significant changes as multiple alerts may not have previously been applied to it. The version currently on the website had blanks in it, so Dr. T worked with Les Wexler from the RTSAA and Mr. Gennella to create a version that has, you know, fully embodied the program as we have now. Required Parent Guardian Program is something that can now be implemented. It includes student programs that have already been in place and new ones, including LEED. We had a clean version of it and also Google Compare Version just because there were so many changes and strike-throughs provided to the full board. And then we had the opportunity to follow up with the committee's questions regarding the legal update. Another policy that the committee discussed, this has been ongoing for a while, 2330 Homework. This is based out of a district initiative, revised homework guidance, which included studying and suggested reading times, makeup work and completes role of parents, teacher feedback and grading. And district stakeholders have reviewed it and building administration as well, from which we received positive feedback regarding the changes. Policy 3282 and 4282 both involve use of social networking sites. One is for teaching staff, the other for support staff. This was related to recently updating for distance learning, communication and tech policies. Language was added in regarding the use of district social media and it was revised to reflect current practices and expectations. Dr. T shared some language changes that the RT EA would like reflected in the policy and we'll discuss that a little bit later. And we appreciate the feedback. Um, we also discussed the policy manual update, which is a continued work in progress. We have members and the policy alternate are assigned policies based on committee assignments, areas of expertise to review as per their task list. At this point, the committee members should have reviewed each other's policies by now and then the next phase is going to be reviewing assigned regulations for consistency and then reviewing each other's comments prior to the next policy meeting. The goal with this is to complete the review of the outstanding policy and review the outstanding regulations for consistency identified as needed per the Strauss-Esmey Audit from last year, which are included in the manual update. So we can bring the RTSD policy manual up to compliance. And we do anticipate that that will be on the board agenda for adoption in January 2020. Recommendations for this evening, Policy 2230 will be up for a first read tonight. Policy 3282 and 4282 will also be up for a first read tonight with the additional feedback from the RT EA reflected. Regulation 5530 up for a first read tonight. And Policy and Regulation 5200 will be included in the policy manual update. We were looking forward to hearing building administration feedback that would be shared with the committee in the future. Our upcoming meeting is December 9th from 6:15 to 8:15 at Central Office. Are there any questions?
I have a question in reference to the Strauss-Esmey Audit portion. This is the item that we paid them to do. I'm just very confused.
Correct, but with doing that, we still want to make sure that we're reviewing and ensuring accuracy in some of the policies that they or regulations that they provided to us. There were pieces that needed to be filled in by us based on what our district is currently doing or what the district currently plans to do. In some instances, there may be programs that we didn't have. So for example, this regulation that was worked on today was something that would have been a part of that. But Dr. T, Mr. Gennella and Les really expanded on the completion of that one.
I guess I'm just confused on what we paid for them to do because I was under a different impression, but okay.
What will be happening then is all of these policies and regulations, which there are a number of them, will be getting uploaded all at the same time to our manual, which will also be saving our central office staff a great deal of time, effort, energy as well.
I was just under the impression we paid them $4,000 to do it to make it a short process back in the summer and now we're looking at January 2021 and it seems like the committee's spending an awful lot of time anyway going over it. So that's all, there's just frustration there. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, any other committee reports?
I just have a note. We have an operations meeting on Tuesday, November 24th at 4:00 PM at the board office. Mr. Thomasini, I'm going to ask you if you could check your calendar just in case I need you to come in as an alternate. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Because Mrs. Helborg was unfortunately unable to attend tonight due to a family emergency. She sent the committee reports. There was an education committee meeting on November 11th from four to five at the central office and attends for Dr. Trumanian, Mr. Higgins, Nancy Helborg, Lisa Mezak and Larissa Smith. The items that are on tonight's agenda that we discussed were the two, uh, school testing coordinators, lead training for fifth to seventh grades, a family night and the gate workshop for those children, November 23rd. The focus is on empathy, compassion and design. I think that's about it. Okay. Any questions? Okay, so number seven on the agenda is recommended for board action. Personnel will have number one on page four through 32 on page seven. I have a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation of personnel items.
So moved. Second.
This is Shields and second is Mrs. Brooks. One note, I just want to make a point to mention that on page six, the job descriptions, 14 through 16, they were tabled at our October 28th meeting. They are on the agenda and are now recommended by the superintendent. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Corralaru?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezak?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Thomasini?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. For the HIV, Dr. Trumanian, do we have any current HIV investigations?
We do. We have actually two open investigations at this time.
Two open investigations, okay.
Yes.
Okay, under C, Education on page eight. Motion will be for number one through four on page eight. I have a motion to approve the education recommendations.
Second.
Those Mrs. Brooks and Mrs. Shields. A roll call, please.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Corralaru?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezak?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Thomasini?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Under D, Special Education on page eight, there's one item. I have a motion, please, to approve number one.
So moved.
So moved.
That was Mrs. Curiaru and Mrs. Brooks. Have a roll call, please.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Corralaru?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezak?
Yes.
Thomasini?
Yes.
Motion carries.
On page nine, E.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Thomasini?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Yeah. At the bottom of page nine, that continues to page 10, items one through seven. I have a motion to approve the finance recommendation, please.
So moved.
Mr. Thomasini, can I have a second?
I'd, I'd like to just make a point, Lisa, that myself and Mrs. Shields signed the bills yesterday and they, we recommend them for approval.
Okay, thank you. Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Corralaru?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezak?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Thomasini?
Yes.
Motion carries.
On page 11, G, Policy, there will be two motions on, there'll be two motions for this. Can I have a motion to approve the policy recommendations, please?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Curiaru, who is the second?
Uh, Thomasini and Corralaru. Thank you.
Yes, okay, the first policy up for first read is Policy 2330 Homework. Parents' feedback being provided from teachers. The grading of homework in K to five, that'll be considered behavioral grade in K, in six through eight. It will not exceed 10% of a student's academic grade in a course. There is a table that was revised to include homework completion time for grade level, suggested reading times as well. That all came from the administration. We also have addressed students that are absent for any reason and the requirement to make up homework assignments. There is reference as well to incompletes that are included in the regulation on grading, 2624. Some language modifications have been made as well. Guardian teachers and then also any references were added at the end and it references Regulation 26. Next policy up for first read is Policy 3282, the use of social networking sites. And this is for the teaching staff members. It's a very similar policy for the support staff members as well. So many of the changes, not all the changes have been applied in here. So some of the changes were really just language making it sound as if it flowed a little bit better. And if you take a look on page two of five, there were expectations that were added regarding use of professional social networking sites. The item that I was referring to that the RT EA in their weekly meeting with Dr. T had requested that we clarify as well in number 12, inserting in the sentence, "The board has the right in its sole discretion to require a certain social media account, page, post, tweet or other content that violates district policies, procedures, law or is otherwise disruptive." So we did want to add that in and that was recommended by Dr. T as well. In addition, language students and just other pieces to make the policy flow a little bit more and be more consistent. We also added in one and Regulation 3321. And then that same language addition requested by the RT EA would also be added into Policy 4282, Use of Social Networking Sites. And again, that one is for support staff members. And then the last item that is up for first read is the Regulation 5530 Substance Abuse, which is mandated and the board is required to adopt it. This was the item that was collaborated, Dr. T, Les and Mr. Gennella all worked on this together. We included some suggestions regarding consistency of language, parents' guardians, removing of education after the board, superintendent of schools, removing of schools. It's important to note in here that because there were so many policies the data reporting system changed from Electronic Violence and Vandalism Reporting System to the Student Safety Data System. To reflect statute, another one added an epinephrine. Another policy alert expanded the definition of substances and other drugs. It also clarified when the superintendent should contact law enforcement. In addition, another policy alert designated certain persons to administrate medications and also included the use of a nebulizer at the school. to administrate medications and also included the use of a nebulizer at the schools. If you take a look at page three of 18, you'll see the offenses were added in. And that was something that was done as a collaborative effort. On page four of 18, in C1, this was language that we recently clarified with the board attorney. In the third line, it should say student assistance coordinator. And the SAC is in parentheses. And underneath who would be handling the situation. So that would be the only time that SAC would be referenced in the regulation. And in any other instance where SAC was mentioned, Dr. T. would like to have school counselor included. And that was something that we again confirmed with Jackie. If you take a look also on page 14, you'll notice that there are the items that have been added in and the specifics that Dr. T. collaborated on with Mr. Gennella and Mr. Wexler as well. Also added in or suggested the addition of the references to policy 5530 and policy 8330. I don't know if Dr. T. A very long time.
It has, no, and I appreciate the board's patience with it. And you know, the next evolution of this is, you know, is implementing the curriculum and the educational programs as well as, and I know, Board Member Smith, you're familiar with that. What we're excited about. Starting to, you know, make some commitments around that in partnership with the Rockaway Township Substance Abuse Alliance. So, so again, no, just excited to really memorialize this and then honor it in person when we, when it's appropriate.
Thank you. And then we have motions to approve the following policies for second read. And I just would like to clarify regarding these policies up for second read. There was additional feedback from the RTEA on policy 3322, staff members' use of cellular telephones. And they had asked if in paragraph three, it says, "A teaching staff member's personal cellular telephone or other personal communication device shall be secured and under the control of the teaching staff member." And they asked to remove the piece that says, "And outside the view of others." And this was a recommendation that Dr. T. had also suggested and the policy committee is on board with. We also had added in that line at the end, unless it is for the purpose of facilitating those assigned school district responsibilities. And that was additional language that was requested by the RTEA. And it would be the same application to the policy for support staff members, which is 4322. And that's all I.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any questions about this?
Just a point of discussion for the homework policy. In the section for a suggested homework time, a suggested reading time. I mean, I realize it says suggested, so it's not a definite and it can only be that. But in policy committee, was there a discussion about concerns that parents might see this as, okay, I have a third grader, they're working on homework for 30 minutes, they're not I don't want the child then to go back to school and be penalized for like having these suggested times like written down in black and white.
Yes, on the second page, it addresses, I'm sorry, Dr. T.
Go ahead, go ahead.
On the second page, it addresses if a child is repeatedly having a concern with getting the work done and the allotted amount of time to notify.
I see that. I just, yeah, I just hope parents out there see it as suggested. And I know every child does things at a different pace. And just that, you know, the teachers are looking out for the best interest of the kids as well. And I know, you know, past experiences, teachers have said, listen, if it's taking too long, shoot me an email, let me know, so.
And that's still the general value system, if you would, that we're, as an administration, will look to continue to nurture.
I have a comment on that policy as well. The last bullet point for for parents/guardians to have their hands on the pulse of their child's skill development. I think I understand what we're trying to say there, and I appreciate that bullet point. But to me, it just reads weird. I don't have a much better, more scientific or educated way to say it. It just reads a little weird. Maybe if we could just somehow make it simpler. That's all.
I believe that was one that was added on, I believe, by the administrative team. So I don't know if that's something that they want to see, if they.
No, if I recall correctly, it was a bit time ago. But when we were working on this policy, we were, for this policy in particular, we did research policies in other districts. And I guess I just had a different reaction to the language when I read it from another district. And it's like, oh. But we can certainly look to, look to sharpen.
You don't necessarily have to change it. I'm just saying, I read it and personally to me, it was like, huh, that's a little bit of a weird point. That's all.
It was meant to grab your attention, so.
It grabbed my attention. And then also just in, on the last two sentences on that first page, it says, "In grade K through five." Should that be grades or grade? That's a grammatical silly thing. You guys can choose. But that's all I have on that one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mrs. Brooks, just to clarify, are you okay with it going forward with that, that sentence?
If I am in the minority, absolutely. Just wanted to make the point. I read it and it was, it was a little weird. That's all.
Okay, does anyone else have a problem with the, the language? Okay, so we don't need to table this. Right, so it will go forward with how it is currently written with this vote, if it passes. Okay, any other?
Question on the social media one as well, if no one else has homework. Is this policy in reference, so I'm going down to, what is this, page two? The first, number one, when using professional social networking sites, says, "Any and all social media accounts used by teaching staff members to conduct district business." The only question I have here is, are we giving teaching staff permission to start their own classroom social media? Or is this, I know we have them for the schools and stuff, and the district as a whole. So I don't know if that's a legal question, but for me, are we, are we giving them permission with this point to start? Like everyone's going to have their own classroom social?
No, that's not what we're envisioning here. It's more for, in the, in the case of school by school, there the school community will rely on, the administrators will rely on to support the school-specific social media accounts. And so in those events, we just want to make sure this language protects them in that instance. And we just make it very clear, that's the district-sponsored social media accounts.
Or policy related to internet usage, both with their own personal media accounts as well as any district-sponsored accounts. For more like groups.
Any other comments or questions?
I just had a comment on another word in another bullet, but now I lost it, so. Nothing major.
You can take it.
I gotta find it. Hold on.
You know, I have a comment about the change of the language of the pulse for the first policy. We can always just put, continue to be informed or to stay informed, if that helps. I couldn't help myself when I heard that, so. I don't know if it's too late to change.
You know me, Kristi. I'm all about simple, so.
Yeah, so.
No, I'm good on the rest of the policies. And I appreciate Kristi's brain power there for me.
Okay, so that people would like to have that language changed?
Well, given Kristi is a member of our policy committee, my, just if I could pause for
Your hand on the pulse of.
I concur with Kristi's wording on that.
I think we're unanimous.
All right, so that's good. Okay, Rachel, is that okay?
No, it's perfect. I just wanted a little simpler.
How about you, Larissa?
Sounds good.
Okay, can you repeat that one more time, please?
To continue to be informed.
Okay, so with the change in language of continue to be informed, this will go forward as a motion to approve the following policies for a first read, 2330, 3282, 4282, the regulation 5530, and obviously the following, the listed policies for the second read. Okay? Sicardo, can I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Kurilaru?
Yes.
Mezak?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Thomasini?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And that brings us to page 12. And item seven, under A, old business, do we have any old business? No? Okay. About B, new business, any new business?
I just wanted to think, the RTEA, my kids are very excited about pizza night tomorrow night. And it's nice to know, I already know what we're having for dinner, so. Don't have to plan.
All right, thank you. Mr. Thomasini?
The one thing I wanted to bring up, and was brought up in the Morris County School Boards Meeting in regards to exposing children to the military and military experience. It's not a recruitment effort, but just showing some of the different jobs that groups together and perform things like flag ceremonies. So I thought that was something that was an excellent idea, just being able to see some of the things that are out there, just opportunities.
Yeah, that would be great for like the Veterans Day assemblies, you know, when we're able to, to have those types of things, to have like, almost like a job fair out in the parking lot for the kids or in some field. That would be nice.
Absolutely.
Well, to piggyback on Kristi's Veterans Day, I just wanted to comment. I noticed a lot of the schools have done it virtually. And it was really sweet because I don't get to go to Dwyer's program or, you know, DBOs and things like that. So it was really nice to be able to see some of them on social media. And I just thought it was sweet and I appreciated that they were able to still honor that in a pretty great way.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, I have one thing. At the Thursday, November 12th, Morris County School Board Association meeting, Mrs. Smith was awarded the and at least three of the new boardmanship member core areas and meet all the requirements. Some of those accumulate at least 10 board member academy credits, attend in-person Governance 1 New Board Member Orientation, attend at least one statewide or regional professional development program, attend at least two county association meetings, attend at least one annual New Jersey Scoreboard Association Workshop Conference. The eligibility is limited to the first two years of board service. And you may not have been judged to evolvent the School Ethics Act. So congratulations, Mrs. Smith.
Good job.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're going to end. Open for our second public comment, if anyone's waiting. Do we have anyone waiting?
There are no members of the public waiting at this time.
Okay. Then I suppose we can move to closing the meeting. I have a motion. Please. Okay, let this be shown that our meeting has been adjourned.